Monday, June ninth, two thousand twenty-five. We acknowledge that we are meeting on the traditional treaty territory of the Pasquey Cree Nation in the Métis homeland. I'll call on trustee Keller to give the reflection.
Who is trying to be respectful and enthusiastic and school community dedicated to quality education for all.
Motion on the floor that the Kelsey School Division Board of Trustees approved the regular board meeting agenda that's circulated for June ninth, two thousand twenty-five. Moved by trustee Keller, seconded by trustee Fox, all in favor. Motion on the floor that the Kelsey School Division Board of Trustees approved the minutes of the regular board meeting of May twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-five. Moved by trustee Young, seconded by trustee Fox, all in favor. Having no invited presentations or unfinished business, we'll move on to item six point zero for action decision, starting with the Baker-Tillay product.
Yeah, so I can talk about this just again. Those of you who haven't seen this before, because we are a public entity under the province of Manitoba, we do need to issue a audited statement once a year. Do it at the end of May. But that captures all the wages actually paid to employees above a certain value. I think the value now is eighty-five thousand dollars. So this is something we've circulated for you guys to see. You need an approval by motion for you guys to produce the final copy, then that goes into the province. One, I guess, one commentary on it this year because we did have a settlement for the teachers for two years of back pay. Because it's based on cash receipts, not actual wages. There, some of the wages look significantly higher than they would have. Just because of that, which is because the back pay is a little bit, so a bit of an anomaly when you look at it.
Does anyone have any questions or comments for Mr. Keller regarding the Baker-Tillay? I didn't see it.
You're halfway there already.
Plating the driver just to help me pass.
It should just be in the driver. In the agenda, there is a draft Bill fifty-seven audit file there, Kelsey School Division.
So do I call it approved with the Bill fifty-seven audit? For approval and criticism?
So I would just call it the schedule of renumeration and expenses paid. Or how about I quickly?
Just print the page here?
Where is it?
It's in the board of board agenda for trustees.
Sure. Schedule of renumeration and expenses paid?
Schedule of expenses paid to, oh, no, you know, I'm going to reprint this and let's just maybe we'll just catch it at the end if you want.
Okay.
Because it's, there's two pieces to it, too. So the other part on here, and I guess I should mention as well, is it also captures all of our remuneration paid to you guys as well. So just in gross, not individually. So it'll be, you know, there's a line in there for total paid to trustees and any other expenses as well. So something that the province seems is to make sure that boards aren't paying themselves too much money, spending too much money. Various expenses as well.
Table motion until.
If you table that to the end, I'll type one out here.
Thank you. Oh, during classroom support, Scott Bateman Middle School.
So that's me as well. So we, we had a grant or they had a grant that they had applied for a couple of years ago from Farm Credit Canada for some outdoor equipment. It was about thirteen thousand dollars. So it expired December thirty-first and they gave them an extension to July. Unfortunately, nothing really came out of this and they didn't come up with anything until just recently. So, you know, the vice principal and principal were looking at some stuff. They'd been looking for an outdoor classroom for some time. They were able to shift the grant from that to this. The cost of an outdoor classroom, we looked at a few options between twenty-three and twenty-five thousand dollars installed. They have about seventeen, I think, is what they had. So to get them that extra little bit, we're looking for between five and seven and a half thousand dollars. So I mean, one of the, a couple of things to mention with Scott Bateman, I mean, obviously their equipment out in the playground is in pretty poor condition. We've been taking it piece by piece away as, as they've fallen apart. There's not much use fixing it anymore. The other piece to this is, you know, of the thirteen thousand dollars, us kicking in about seven and a half, that's still two for one investment. So I think this is probably something we should consider. I know I've talked a little bit before about, you know, playground equipment and us probably having to spend more money in the future. You know, again, bit of a prelude to some of the bigger expenses that are probably coming, but this is something that would be probably hugely beneficial to the division, to that school in particular. I'm sure Trevor could say more. I mean, I know the schools all want these outdoor classrooms after Kelsey got one. You know, it's probably something, you know, otherwise we're probably looking at sending this money back at this point. I don't think we have really anything else on the docket. So now we are probably in a position of surplus this year. So if we are going to do it, really what I'm looking for, I don't have a line in my budget for seventy-five hundred dollars for playground equipment. What I'm looking for from the board is that approval to proceed and at least have that maximum available. Offer it in case it's something that will help this project get to completion.
Okay.
I don't know if you have anything to add to that.
It was definitely something that more and more schools are looking for utilizing outdoor classrooms. So that I think grants a lot of good points there with the equipment they have over there, it's quite a whole, I mean, it's being taken out. There's an opportunity to put in, it's still kind of costly some money, but it's better than, you know, to pay the whole shop for twenty-five or twenty-seven. So it'll spruce up that area. It hasn't been, gone many new pieces in quite some time compared to the other schools.
Do you have also any questions or comments regarding their profession?
Maybe the same as Kelsey's that kind of moved.
Yeah, exactly. It's just a four poster with a canopy that goes on somewhere about, that lets it thaws out. You know, at some point, I'm sure they're going to probably be chasing tables to go underneath it as well, but you know, not step in the right direction.
And relatively low. Is that a concrete perimeter or is it just the ground? It's supposed to be looking at.
Just the bolster of the.
As they talk, Kelly had mentioned that like last year, I think he was probably over that. They sort of have a spot to put it.
Yeah, we're probably looking at, and again, we're just doing our final measurements and obviously before we order anything, there was a couple of sizes available of the the units. Again, two thousand dollar difference between an eighteen by eighteen and a twenty-four by twenty-four. But we're probably looking at in the front of the school there, between the fence separating the parking lot and off to the side of that concrete pad. To try and still maintain whatever egress, because people still kind of cut through there, but it's close to the front of the school. You know, it's easy access for people to go use it. That's part of the schooling as well. You can go inside and have outdoor classroom, kind of keep an eye on it. Yeah, it's too far from the school, things may happen. And it's kind of, I mean, Scott Bateman's kind of a poorly designed lot, I would say, in terms of, you know, where we could stick things. The other rush is, you know, we, we could have put it where the playground is now, but we don't have time to take that down before this has to go up. So it's kind of, our hands are a little tied without trying to move something that's already in place. And honestly, I think that's the better spot anyway.
Motion on the floor that the Kelsey School Division Board of Trustees approved up to seven thousand five hundred dollars to support the purchase and installation of an outdoor classroom unit to be located at a cool Scott Bateman Middle School. Move the trustee of all in saying. Seconding trustee Leeson, all in favor. On June twenty-third, twenty twenty-five meeting. Only that is the same night as the Rad Awards. Once again this year, our board meeting and that event seem to line up. Superintendent Lane and I both have been invited to attend that. It's very difficult to go and attend something like that and then have to get up when it's not quite done and leave. So we're looking at postponing that meeting. And we did discuss the possibility of canceling it altogether, but we should have a principal to approve at some point. Not that we couldn't have an emergency meeting to do that. Just thoughts around the table of whether postponing or canceling the June twenty-third meeting.
That's the last meeting of the year?
That's the last meeting of the year. Last year, we chose to postpone simply because staffing was still so up in the air and we had the moving targets still happening. Wait, this year, that's not the case. Depending on the principal competition at Mary Duncan, whether that causes a domino effect or not, and we won't know that until after interviews are done.
Do you suspect that would be the only business to approve because we even have a special meeting for that?
Yeah, we could have a special meeting just for that. I don't know that we have anything else coming up to. Are you aware of anything else?
So.
So thoughts, cancel or postpone?
I would cancel. Yeah, we've been staffed with.
I know you're not coming, Sarah.
I couldn't say either way.
Either way, okay.
If something comes up, we can just call.
Yeah. So we will still be having a meeting between now and the end of the school year because we will definitely have to the negotiation with personnel committee will have to come to the board with a recommendation for the principalship at Mary Duncan. And then what happens to the mayor will set the tone of whether we need to have another special meeting after that. So in a way, it might be better if we cancel the twenty-thirty meeting and just called special meetings as needed, just to keep things moving along instead of waiting.
And no different than any other time. If there's, by that time, if there's important things for the board, I'll send an email out and ask that that special aim is, if we're not reading or just information. Sounds good.
Travis? Motion on the floor that the Kelsey School Division Board of Trustees canceled the board meeting of June twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five. Move by trustee Young, second by trustee Keller, and Fox, all in favor. Very. Moving on to the superintendent's business report.
So I attended a meeting on June fifth and this is about the reporting of serious injuries through the Manitoba Children's Advocate. So they are making sure again, students in serious incidents don't get, go through the cracks in terms of if, if there's something that's seriously happening to, to one of our students. So that's with either at school or at home. And they have different criteria set up that I won't get into this meeting, but it's, I wanted to put in a report I was giving to that when you would make a report based on the seriousness of an injury. We obviously have our own levels of reporting at our school, which wouldn't change. This is just kind of another layer of, of reporting so that child advocacy can do the best and that's, have the best interest of students and ensure that things are followed up on if there's a serious serious injury to a student. So that was a good report. So what we're going to do is I handed some information off to Student Services Coordinator because each division has to allocate one person that would then take this serious injury and report it and forward it on throughout the form to that organization. So that'll be something I can see we're doing in the future. The MRLC professional development with, so we're on with a group again for next year in five different cohorts, actually more than that. Those are just the areas that we have more than one diversity group and more than one literacy group as well. Those groups have been picked by the, between the, obviously the staff themselves, the principals and myself. And they've been selected online, put in and registered. So we're going to go through, for those groups. And each cohort is usually a group of, you know, three or four from, from our area and then some from Tom's. Et cetera. So it's really good PD. So that's set up. Have the KTA, KST liaison meeting, which is good. We, we're a few items there. Power school, the last communication went down last week on to our website and I also had to put an ad in the paper as per our we have one lawyer for the twenty-eight, twenty-nine divisions to ensure that just in case people don't have accents and send an email or a telephone call, et cetera, we were required to put that in favor. So if you happen to see that in the past, that's why. And the ad in the paper versus the website version, obviously completely different in size, significant information because we wanted to put a great big ad in the paper, just places as refer to the information website to get. Staffing almost complete. Posting for the principal, Mary Duncan, closed today. So I have more information to follow on that. Many year events and activities happening across division. The unfortunate air quality is worse some to cap to cancel. And I just, I've included this in, in the report or in my report. If you're interested, there's, I don't know if anybody in the public is asking questions about why was it canceled? How come no recess? How come this? So I have to go by factual information and that's out there. Unfortunately, the only air quality testing station that's in our areas in Flint, which may or may not be giving us great information at times, but rather than me going out and sniffing the air and say, I think today's a good day for recess. They're listening out over your head. Exactly. Because there have been some days where I've even questioned the index, but I have to be consistent with the message. So I've been looking at this IQ air as well as Environment Canada. And they use two different scales, which I included in here, which explains what one hundred and thirty-three means versus five or six of the Environment Canada scales. So I've been consistent with that message. I've sent this email to the principals prior and tried to give them a heads up as to what the week is looking like. Usually every day I'll send them an email, but I, I sent one, for example, on Sunday, Monday to Thursday. Unless it changes and looks like all activities and recesses will be basically changed. However, I checked today and Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, it looks like it's okay. Now, I did receive a phone call today. I don't know exactly how good, good the information is or exactly when this will happen, saying that they were putting up a station here in the next couple of days. Now, station, it sounds all like they're putting small green in the ground. I think it's just a small monitoring unit that they're putting in either Ringtown or at the airport. And I spoiled this by a pretty reliable source. So I said, as soon as they put it in, make sure you share their info with me so we can make more accurate decisions because obviously we don't want to cancel events unless we have to, but also we want to be, make sure that especially you know, our students near school, especially those that are higher risk with asthma. COPD are not outside if they shouldn't be. Sometimes this is not, isn't the, necessarily the number one indicator. It could be other things, right? So, so yeah, so I just included that because I don't know if you, if they're in the public, people are asking me why today there was no recess. That's, that's what I feel. Yeah, the coordination of the buses for evacuees, I just want to big shout out to Rick and Graham, you know, and our bus drivers and their staff. They were working very busy around the clock, getting emails from various people and one minute they needed five buses, then it was two, then it was ten, then it was six, and then they wanted them at six. There's lots of different wheels turning and going. So a big thank you out to all of those people because, you know, we sent off, you know, how many buses we sent to Winnipeg? Four. Four buses to Winnipeg, which is a big deal. I mean, that leaves us shorthanded here. The drivers themselves had to, I mean, you can't make anybody do anything. It was extra hours, but they were more than willing to go. And even some of the drivers, when they got back from Winnipeg, obviously they didn't go over their hours, but they were more than willing to go back out to the airport and shuttle, shuttle evacuees from the airport to the G M C. So yeah, definitely lots of things happening in our community and, you know, in a short period of time, but I think all those individuals did a great job and, yeah, and got people to where they needed to be. And with that, I've got a few things in camera, but that's it.
Any questions or comments for superintendent? Any other questions or chairs of course? I attended the MSBA Board Chair Meeting on May twenty-seventh, which then led into the Escape Four Meeting. Also attended a now through a wireless week presentation on May twenty-eighth. I was invited to judge this speech contest at Scott Bateman on May twenty-ninth and also attended the KTA liaison meeting on the twenty-ninth. Correspondents that I wanted to highlight, the E-News from MSBA. I was emailed that the new math curriculum called Provincewide Implementation through September of two thousand twenty-seven. Local Voices, Local Choices two point O. This is a social media campaign that was held when they were looking at restructuring school divisions. And they just want to highlight whatever good news stories from the divisions that we want to share. So there was some, that's a call for submissions for a social media campaign. June is National Indigenous History Month. It's an invitation to deepen your understanding of indigenous histories, amplify indigenous voices and recognize the strength and resilience that continue to thrive across generations. N I H M two thousand twenty-five website link is available within the E-News letter and National Indigenous Peoples' Day on June twenty-first. Powerful day to honor indigenous heritage and to celebrate together. And on behalf of the Manitoba Accessibility Office, the Accessibility News, issue fifty-seven for June two thousand twenty-five was circulated. And I received survey feedback for the superintendent evaluation survey, which we will assess in the camera. I received an invitation for graduation on Wednesday, June twenty-fifth, one o'clock to assist with presentation of to the graduates and do a short speech and an invitation to awards night for NBCI on Monday, June twenty-third. Just a couple of things that I wanted to highlight from the Manitoba Government. Department of Education, Early Childhood Learning and the Learning Outcomes Guide, the guidance document for students living with a responsible adult. We had talked about that briefly last time and the requirements of what makes someone a resident or not, there's updated forms and a feedback link that was circulated. And then student achievement and inclusion. The K to Call Framework for Continual Improvement twenty-four, twenty-five report, what we heard was circulated also of interest. Any questions or comments?
I did get that email with the new forms for the responsible adults. I don't know if it makes things easier or more complicated, but I'll, I'll be sharing the the leadership group when we, in the, in the fall there. So it's fresh. I didn't see it.
Okay, item nine point zero, Treasuryors, business reports?
Nothing to report. I think I covered my two items above.
Well, ten point zero, standing committees, find outs, having no report. Ten point two, negotiations in first hand.
No report under the board here.
Ten point three, transportation building maintenance.
Looking to report there. I've been there, outdoor classroom.
Ten point four, liaison, trustee Leeson. Ten point five, education, trustee Leeson.
We had a meeting at Basko scheduled today that was canceled in the organist. So I'm looking to rebook for the thirteenth. I sent Krista, the principal at Basko, an email.
Ten point six, Bowleson. Item eleven point zero, other reports. Eleven point one, Mary Duncan, question? Eleven point two, Scott Bateman?
Scott Bateman, yeah. So Kelly sent me a list of things that were going on. I've gone on and passed and we were about to take place. So we had a grade five student orientation. It was on May twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh. So they had a tour of Scott Bateman, looked around and thought we were into school, looks like. School-wide speech finals for on May twenty-ninth at one P M. In the gym. June set, third and four, twenty-two, grade eight students were going to go on a pig harvest, but that was canceled due to the smoke situation. June fifth was the band concert at seven P M. As well as a student art display in the lobby. June fifth, also grade eight presentation, twenty-five minutes on summer employment at nine thirty A M. At the lecture theater. June tenth to twelve is the girls empowerment trip, which has been canceled due to smoke. June twelfth is grade eight farewell, starting at six P M. And June thirteenth is placement day. Grades will be called down during the morning to ponder the question or wisdom on student placements. At twelve is Barb and Shannon's retirement celebration. So if anyone's welcome to have that, if you want to go in the library. And June nineteenth is the year-end awards at seven P M. There as well. So it's kind of a pretty busy schedule coming up in the year.
Want to just say the retirement plans?
Shannon Yaskew and Barb.
When?
Oh, when? Sorry, Friday. When was that?
Friday, June thirteenth.
Yes, Friday, June thirteenth. At twelve. You learn.
Regrets from trustee Stevenson for one point three. So eleven point four, trustee Stevenson?
You know what, dude?
Eleven point five, KTA, KST, trustee Keller.
Yes, the last one we are on the twenty-ninth.
One point six, I can see that. The Manitoba Gaming Cannabis Commission Group came to our school today to talk about safe grad rules and regulations for students and parents. There was a meeting at two forty-five and a meeting at six thirty tonight. The track team traveled to Winnipeg for provincials Wednesday at lunch. It got postponed for Thursday and then canceled on Friday. So the track team came home with a little bit of shopping done, but that's about it.
Doing a refund on the.
The last grade.
The last grade wars event was today and the grade nines won the trophy. Exam week begins next week and the math provincials are going to start tomorrow. Grad picture retakes are also tomorrow. Sports awards are at NBCI on Thursday night. And the current ceremony is on June twenty-fifth and is later followed by the grad parade and the grand walk.
Thank you. Any questions for? Eleven point seven, Chelsea Pack, Trustee Holdenson.
Nothing to report. There's a meeting tomorrow. Potentially, if there's items in the lab, but I haven't heard yet, so. I think as of now, there's a back meeting tomorrow, seven P M.
Eleven point eight, Africa, Trustee Taylor.
Oh, I did did not attend. My family attended the show in Mexico. I didn't carry all of that. There were people on the same thing. That's good to. Mister, he's one of the, he's one of the guys that helped organize it and brought brought a pinata and he was was pretty excited about that whole thing, you know, to be a part of it. So him and another family or his family and another family were kind of like the main people. Both from the same town in Mexico. I don't know the other family, but that's going for it since he started this network. I guess I got an email later in the week, I guess. I like to find out starting up a fall, kind of to get involved. And yeah, continuing with the do, if you were in the library, it's kind of evening and like it is this year, so we're having two day ones. Instead of, I don't know, monthly, your data, it's all one.
Here, any questions for? Item twelve point, oh, Manitoba School Boards Association report on business. Nothing for action. Call point two, information E-News is highlighted in my report. Catalyst teaching, teaching learning metal survey letter was also submitted to trustees. CAA School Safety Patrol Program, the Legislative Restoration Grad Letter and the Air Quality Index. Thirteen point O, information items, we have none. Thirteen point one correspondence and the orange folder from Dr. Apple and a particular Venetian sponsorship to discuss.
Which is good.
So the correspondence from Dr. Apple is the gentleman that worked on our policies. He has taken on a new partner and is offering services to them for the school boards. Effective, actually, first head of justice, formerly the Director of Governance and Professional Development for the Manitoba School Boards Association. And the author who needs to govern its framework, hopefully partnering with him in the provision of governance and leadership support to the Manitoba School Division. So this is just information and letting you know what services. Then we received a a letter from Cynthia Young, Pastel Indian, Indigenous Days Director, requesting support for the sixtieth anniversary of O I D. And it's fast portraying will be held August seventeenth. This year, the theme is Year of Honor and Appreciation. So there's different levels of sponsorship packages available. And I'm sorry, the pressure in memory, have we ever submitted this event?
I can't say ever, but in the last couple of years, I don't think we have.
Well, we don't usually give a catch. It's all for cash. It's a good one. Local events usually is an in kind, whether it's a classroom or a space. I think not a monetary donation. I think we can direct to the expense of points, but we will not be able to support this. End session or questions? Hey, Alan.
I'll catch it after, so I didn't want to keep coming and going. It's printed and sitting over there, but.
So do we want to wait and receive requests and correspondence after you do that one?
No, you can do this and then I can just, I'll pull it in at the end. We've already talked about it broadly, I just.
Hey, did you remember next week, regular board meeting, June twenty-third has been canceled? And please pay close attention to your email account as we will be having a special meeting between now and the end of year. So both from the floor, the Castle School Division Board of Trustees received requests and correspondence. And by trustee Young, seconded by trustee Holdenson. All in favor? Carry it. At this time, I'd like to thank you, Sarah, for sitting on our board of us. I guess this is your last thinking. On the floor, that we go in camera at seven. Public in the room, is there any questions for those attending virtually for the public question period? Having here none, here none, we'll go Business arising sixteen point zero, then to item seventeen points. Zero in camera. So motion on the floor, the Castle School Division Board of Trustees going camera at seven thirty-eight. With trustee Holdenson, seconded by, let's see, Fox, Paul Hoover. Carry it.